Does Rob know how to do this?
Yeah, I'm sending a message now. First reply back when he's, when we're alive.
Evening, Tom.
Hey.
Okay, we're going to pass these out.
At this time, I'd like to start tonight's meeting. Please join us from the pleasure of allegiance.
My pleasure. To defy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for today and what you granted us. We thank you for the opportunity to take on the concerns of our cities, city and our citizens. We ask you to guide us in the discussions and the decisions that we make and please to those who call us to serve and most importantly, be pleased to you. We ask you in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
There's one for you.
The mayor will not be joining us tonight, so I use my exercise my pro 10 terms to run the meeting. First on the agenda, minutes were presented to us on board pack for, for the meeting May 13th.
Make motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Motion by Kissling, second by Bounce, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye. Any opposed? Apparently not. As we're also the minutes, we have the, the claims that were presented also to us. I'll take a, if you guys have any questions or comments prior to approving the minutes.
Make motion to approve the claims.
Motion by Kissling.
I'll second that.
Second by Bounce, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. All right. First tonight, we have on the agenda is the DuBois County Community Foundation with Clayton Boyle.
Welcome Clayton.
Hey, good to see you. Thanks for having me. Appreciate it. Totally. Yeah. Clayton Boils with the DuBois County Community Foundation here tonight to talk about a project within community, but first just want to say just high level why I'm here and what I represent. So philanthropy plays a powerful role in shaping vibrant, connected communities. Through the efforts of the community foundation, we're proud to partner with individuals, businesses, government agencies, nonprofits to create meaningful lasting impact within our community. This often takes the form of help serving youth programs, social services, or even the enhancement of public places. Today, I come on behalf of the community foundation to present in front of the council to offer a gift to the city of Huntingburg in the form of two adjoining parcels of land located directly south of Market Street Park along 231. To provide some background, this effort began when a group of generous individuals contributed funds to the community foundation with the goal of purchasing the former Walden Chiropractic Building. The intent was to inquire and raise the building, then return the space to a level green parcel. That work's been completed and the land is now cleared, seeded, and ready for new use. With that, we're here today to formally offer this property as a gift to the city with the hope that it will be used to expand the footprint of Market Street Park. I provided in front of you a handout showing the location of the parcels along with a before and after photo for your reference. So formally, I believe, on behalf of the foundation and really the donors who helped make this possible, I respectfully request the council's consideration and acceptance of this donation. Pretty straightforward.
That's great.
Some great pictures. I've heard comments throughout the community of wow, the space looks great. You can see Market Street Park so much better when there's festivals there, which there was a Fourth Friday just recently, even passerbyers kind of a wider visible footprint or, you know, snapshot of being able to see people there. So anyway, it's a beautiful area as you all are aware and have been a part of for many years, the transformation of really Market Street and entering into a park and now the expansion of it this way. So anyway.
I'd like to thank the donors to this project. I think it's much, it was much needed and it is a big improvement for the park.
Yep.
It's definitely, it's amazing, as you said, when you drive past there, how much Market Street looks better. So it's, it's really nice and we appreciate their donations.
Yeah, very generous. Huntingburg is blessed to have donors that appreciate the city, the town, and give back over and over and over to various projects. We're also very fortunate to have the DuBois County Community Foundation to kind of spearhead these, these projects and get them organized. But, and I think if I'm, if I'm correct on this, I believe this was done without any public fund, any city funds to get us to where we're at with that property, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. All dollars were raised philanthropically from individuals or businesses, nothing from a city standpoint. So the gifting would be simply that, a gift. The only string attached would be use it for Market Street Park. So yeah, free and clear, use it as you wish and there's a few dollars left to be able to utilize for improvement of what that might look like. So anything future wise beyond that would be in, in your, your control and ability. So yeah, but to your point, no, no, no public dollars used. Sometimes it's good to use public dollars, sometimes it's good to use private dollars and it's a great philanthropic city partnership in this case.
So we need a motion to accept this?
Yeah, I think you have a resolution.
Yes.
On your community pack.
That would be.
Resolution.
Two thousand twenty-five fourteen.
So I'll take a motion to.
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen.
I'll second it.
Motion by Kissling, second by Bounce, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And that's all we need to do. I'm going to circulate. For tonight, isn't it? Yeah, you can, you don't have to go through various readings. It's just a resolution. So if you would sign as the presiding officer there and pass it down to the chair or Tom.
Very simple.
Thank you.
So we need to say thing.
Yeah, there's also, will somebody be preparing the deed?
Yes. Yeah, our council.
Good.
Prepare the deed, work with Mayor Elkins to get transferred in short order. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is Forest Chief Donnie Hine. Hi, Don.
How are you guys doing today?
Good.
I've been, several of the chiefs have been, we've been working on projects together and one of them is, is an automatic aid agreement. After running it past Mayor Elkins and Phil, Phil said, Phil said that this probably needs, because it's a, how do you say it? Because it's related to the payroll, because there would be, I'm not asking for more money, but it would increase what our runs, not by a lot, but it would increase. So Phil said it probably ought to be run past and approved by the city council. So automatic aid would be with the city of Jasper and what that entails is any active fire or smoke in the area, it's not, not for fire alarms, it is for an active fire that we would get paged at the exact same time that Jasper did and we would respond with one apparatus and four, four firefighters. And they would reciprocate for, for us, okay? They, on average, seven to 10 house fires a year. We historically are probably two or three, but last year we were at five.
We were busy.
And we're not going to talk about this year, so at all, we're not going to mention.
Did they send people over overtime?
This year, or last year, they were at, they were at, they were requested twice. One of ours was out of county or out of our town, out in the township and I requested different personnel, but they would respond to that as well. So this is different than, we, we have mutual aid agreement throughout the county. Mutual aid is a request that I can request at any time for apparatus or personnel. Automatic is, it's an, we don't have to wait for that, wait to get to the scene to figure out what we need. They would just show up. Whether it be backup, we've gone over there this year. Kenny asked us just to, they had a house fire on a Sunday. It was a tough house fire in a tight location. All of their personnel was there and they needed just the backup. So we took an apparatus and, and three people and myself and we stayed there until they were able to be able to handle another response. And so it does a couple of things. The more experience that our firefighters get, you know, one house fire a year isn't experience, but the more that we can get, the better firefighters that our department becomes. So we're looking to see if, to go forward. It's not all, we have a, we have an outline, we have some adjusting to do, some portage of what that would be and Jasper's doing the same thing. They're kind of looking through it to make sure that we're all in agreeance for that. But we would actually, any, anything that was damaged, it'd be like, it'd be, it would be just like the mutual aid agreement. If we took an apparatus and it was damaged, we operate it. Jasper does not operate our equipment, but if it was damaged, it would be paid for by us, no different than if on a mutual apron. And then our firefighters would be paid by us as well for those and it's just for.
So you're going to respond with an engine and then if it gets, they need more, you'll send us second page for aerial possible?
That, that, well, we would be sending seven thirty-six, which is our smaller aerial because that would give us a lot of flexibility on how we can help them.
Right.
It's smaller that we can get in and out of some of their tighter streets versus thirty-eight.
Right.
Or and save our engines for here because for automatic aid, for ISO, this does help our, our, this does help us in points for ISO. They want an engine and our, 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 both of our aerials are quints, which are considered engines. So it gives us that aerial aspect and the engine and we're going to throw a medical bag on there as well so we can help out that way. However, we can help out each other, it gives us cross-training with, with Jasper opportunities, which again helps us with, with, with ISO as well.
There's also an exit clause in the contract, at least the draft I saw, that it's just not working out for us or for Jasper, that either party can terminate on, I think it's sixty day notice and I believe that's what it is.
Yeah. And if we're busy with a run, we can, we can say we can't come. I mean, we're, we're just because it's, our, our community comes first for us and just as theirs does for them as well. So if there's two different incidents going on, we would have to rely on those mutual aid agreements and call for other people as well. It just won't happen as quickly.
Yeah, yeah, let's understand. I had thought of a few things, like additional experience, I think that's noteworthy and then I hadn't considered until you explained it, that if they've got something major going on and they've got their entire force at that site and then something else happens, then there's no backup. So when you say support, it doesn't necessarily have to be support on that fire.
Yeah.
It might be just staying in town, staying on standby.
More than likely, we would be at their scene doing what's called RIT. RIT is a rapid intervention team and that would allow, if, if something happens to one of their firefighters, ours are already dressed, ready to go get their firefighters. But if, if they have enough, they can do both and we would be that backup for their community as well. But we would be taking the apparatus to their, to their, their town.
Based on last year's results, has there been any kind of estimate as to what that additional cost to our department might be if we go to say 10 runs or 12 runs?
It's for four, for four people, you're looking a little over, it'd be about a thousand dollars, probably a little fifteen hundred would be closer estimate.
Per run?
No, 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 no.
For the year?
For the year.
Okay.
For the year. It's not, it's not an extreme cost.
No. Yeah.
Because we get, we get, the firefighters, they get paid per run and it's, it's a little upward of, it'd be about a hundred dollars a run.
Yeah.
From past experience, we've had fire, when I was on the department, we'd have a fire and we have all of our personnel there. In the meantime, we get another call, maybe a medical, maybe whatever, and they can handle that as well.
Sounds smart to me.
Out of our five house fires, we had one, two, actually, they were at three of ours and we had mutual aid at four. So this just speeds up the timeframe of having, waiting to call a mutual aid and that's why it helps our ISO as well. So we're just setting that and they would be our partners for that. It doesn't, it doesn't cost us anything to have them over here for ours, it just costs us to send ours over there.
Sure. How do, how do you decide which four go? Like is there four that are, have priority on this call?
No, no, it's pretty much the, the first four that, that arrived to grab, to grab the truck. That'll be, we'll have an SOP for how that, how that is, how that goes down. They'll report to station one and when we have, I can't have four rookies, that's not going to happen. So when I have at least one experience with, with three other personnel, that's how we would handle that.
Yeah, okay.
But there'll be an SOP for that once we get that, for a little bit closer.
Can you get a motion to approve?
Well, I think at this point, yeah, I think Don is looking for your approval to proceed with negotiating this, the final terms of this and I assume you'll bring it back when we've got an agreement.
I can, I can.
So we can make a motion to, for Don to approve to continue on?
Yes.
Negotiation, that'd be great.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, you got permission now?
Thank you very much.
Next on the list is the super, energy superintendent, John Ruder.
I bet you can't spell it.
I can't spell it.
Hard to pronounce too. Start off with the gas department. We did four new services this month. One of them was at Jago Homes. We got one lot left to be built on and that subdivision will be complete. Then we replaced two services on Geiger Street just out of the third. That's another couple fittings. Discovered that when we changed some meters out and anytime you come across some out of code fittings, they've got to be replaced and documented. So we have to do that. And then we got six services on file. We did change out eighteen meters, which is a little less than normal, but we had a lot of other stuff going at the time, so we'll have eighteen.
How many you think you got left? How many meters you think you got left?
Probably seven hundred.
Okay, never mind.
Take a year or two. Then they did pressure test and tie in a new section of pipe, which was about a hundred and sixty feet on County Road eight hundred. There's a section that got washed out in the field where we have it running, so we had to go in and bore it, bore it in deeper. Got bored in last month, but then we went back, field was too wet to get in, so we went back this month, pressure tested and got it all tied in, so that's all taken care of. And last month, they mainly spent time on these two blocks where we had to bore in new main, new services. Last month, USDI from Illinois, they came in, got everything bored in that we needed bored in. There's a couple services that we did, short services that we did, go ahead, trenched in, dug in. We had to pressure test the mains and then we had to pressure test all the services to the houses. It was all steel, it's pretty old residential homes in that area. Like I said, we converted to plastic, so we got that all pressure tested, tied in and we repaired some of the yards that we had to dig in. The other one was behind Leland number. That road's going to be redone by the street department. Found out our steel main was only ten inches deep and the concrete, so I think it's going to be ten inches, so.
You mean Stankin.
I was going to say.
You mean Stankin, right?
You said Leland. You said Leland number.
And then actually bored that whole block and then we turned on 10th Street and headed toward where the scales are. We got that all tied in. We got the old steel main purged out, cut off, so we're all done in that block right there. Big one we had to switch over was aristocrats, we had to schedule an outage with them, had to dig over to the building and replace that, cut the old line off and put the new one in. So that took a little scheduling, but we got it all done. So any questions on the gas?
Is the last rate ready to be worked on or is the, Jerry, or Gary got it?
Jerry. No, we're done. We, we finished everything we had there when we did the water main project back in 2019.
Okay, good.
It's all ready for the street department to redo the road.
Need that soon.
Yeah.
We need another street tour.
Don't we?
Any questions on the gas, any other questions?
None.
Electric department. We put the new permanent transformer at the new airport terminal. Did a lot of terminating on the wires, set the transformer, got it all energized, got that all done. There's two underground projects of a residential. One of them was in St. Henry that had to be done before the K of, CK of A, gotta write this month, CK of A is going to be tore down in a couple of weeks, so we had to get that project done for that line would have been in the way. So we did, we're just about done with that. There were six trees we cut up first in Geiger. Homeowner, we talked to them, they said go ahead and take them down, so we did, all the way to the ground. And then we did receive our first batch of electric meters, eleven hundred and twenty. We got about over five hundred of them changed out so far. We should get another batch in another month or two, so got a good start on it. And then we did work on some storm damage, that storm came through last, the other Friday. Whenever you have a storm like that, there's usually some follow-up the week after, limbs on lines, we had a couple secondary poles break. We kind of propped them up until the following week, but we could get in there and change them out. We did have a circuit go down. In an alley, there was a line, a tree that came over the lines, the main lines, so we had to get in there and repair that. Give like an hour and a half outage or a couple hours, but we got it back on, isolated it. I do have a quote for wooden poles, as you can see at the bottom, with Thomason Company, coppers and brown lumber, which Thomason being the cheaper, the lowest bid, thirty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty. And every year, we send out our yearly pole contact in April. You can see at the bottom what the amount will be, so that helps offset the loaded poles we got to buy. So I'd like approval to get them ordered.
John, have you ever, would you know off the top of your head, even a ballpark of, rather than wooden poles, if you were to begin replacing poles with steel, how much more of an investment would that be?
About three times more. We do have ductile iron poles in stock, replacement where there's a critical pole that we kind of look it over, we determine it's a real critical pole, we'll put a cast of ductile iron there. To replace every pole with a duct would be too expensive, but you keep them on a critical main line, does work pretty good.
Okay. And then that pole contact revenue, is that some kind of number that's mandated by the state or does some, somebody regulate what?
We're, we're by the consumer price index yearly. Around like eleven, twelve dollars, it kind of varies a little bit.
Yeah, depending on when it starts, they're different time periods, but it increases by whatever the consumer price index is.
Like twenty-four, one hundred and sixty-nine poles, pole contacts that we receive money on. And we get that yearly.
Yeah. Do, do the powers that be think that that's a fair amount of money, that utility or that our utility gets paid for someone else using our, using our infrastructure like that?
I don't think it is. That's what we got to go by.
Yeah, I mean.
Handcuffed, aren't you?
I don't know if, if that has been looked at recently.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it should be looked at or if it's governed by some state mandate that you can't charge more than blank for, for, to any one company per pole?
No, when, when we originated it, we, we were using the figure per pole that was customarily used throughout the state essentially, and then we adjusted it annually for the consumer price index increases. And the feeling was that would keep up with, with current costs. Now, if it, if there ever becomes a dispute about what is a fair rate between connector and the city, they could petition the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission to mediate a fair price. But I, I don't know when we looked at it last, we've just got the consumer price.
I've seen, staying with the cost of increase of pole cost, that's the question, I guess.
Pole cost's going up, but.
I agree. And what's the lifespan of these that you're replacing, are these thirty, fifty years? Eight, seventy-five years?
No.
You know, probably not.
These are, the poles are treated with DC LI, which is a new, the pole treatment that they did away with the.
Pen.
Crisol.
Crisol and pen.
The Crisol like. And the brochure said the fifty year limited warranty.
Oh, yeah.
So you can take what the limited warranty.
Yeah.
Piece of paper.
All the poles bed and rot, it's warranty.
So how, how long will these poles last? Is this a less than a year? Less than a year supply or a year supply?
Yeah.
Oh, we've been, changed a lot of them out since 2017. We've probably changed six, seven hundred poles out. You know, whenever we see the need, we've got an old leaner pole, we'll change it out. So it only makes your system stronger.
Yeah.
It'd probably last till next year.
Seems like we buy about two loads a year.
Yeah, this is two semi-loads.
Yeah, that's what I see, best if I recall, we buy about two semi-loads a year.
Yeah. Once you've got a major storm coming in, we'll feel a little more.
Would it be fair to, you know, sometimes some parts of the economy, prices inflate a lot faster than others. So you've got your general CPI for, which includes everything, but if poles, for example, have gone up fifty percent in the last five years and the general inflation rate's gone up twenty percent, then we probably need to be looking at that a little closer. I'm, I'm just curious, you know, if we, if there's a way to, to calculate what the cost of these poles, I mean, we probably have internal records of what we've been paying for them. If that's not too hard of a number for you to come up with, just to look at what the per pole cost was in 2020 versus now 2025?
Probably double.
And then we ought to, we ought to take a look at those, at the way we price that. If, if that cost to maintain that infrastructure's gone up dramatically faster than the general CPI, then we, we ought to have that conversation in an upcoming meeting.
Poles aren't a commodity, but I would have to think it falls as a commodity wood product to a point, just my opinion.
You mean up and down?
Yeah.
Yeah, based on.
And these poles come from southern states, so they're, they're not imported or nothing.
Alabama. These big poles are in Alabama and Mississippi.
Pacific, Alabama.
Okay.
That's one good thing. What about Tarasong?
Could you, could you do that for us and yeah, true, but could you do that for us and maybe report back at a future meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
So just, just taking bare figures, if we're receiving about twelve bucks a connection?
Yeah.
So twelve bucks a connection times fifty years, six hundred bucks and we're paying three hundred and twenty dollars a pole for, for the thirty thirty pole, thirty thirty poles, we're paying five eighty-four for the two forty poles. And paying seven oh six, so our pole rental connection is almost paying for the pole.
Yeah.
Over a fifty year period.
Yeah.
Most of.
And that's, and that's kind of what, what these people are looking at when they contract with the city.
Yeah.
What would our rental, what rental should we pay in that to enable you to be able to replace these poles at the end of their life expectancy?
Most of the connections are on the forty and forty-five foot poles. So.
So they're seven hundred dollar.
Yeah, they're seven hundred and five hundred and eighty-four for a forty foot. And you got probably three companies on one pole, so you're getting three times that for just that one pole.
And we're using them also. And we're using them as well.
Yeah.
Serving our needs too.
Yeah.
So as long as, as long as, if you look back and see how many years would that So as long as, as long as, um, if you look back and see how many years would that fee, that annual fee have taken to pay for a pole in twenty twenty, versus how many years will that pay for a pole in twenty twenty-five? If we, but you could eventually, the cost of the poles could run away from the fee that we're, that we're charging. So I guess all I'm wondering, all I'm saying is that rather than wait till ten years down the road and realize that cost of poles gone up so much, and we're only, now it's only paying for thirty years instead of fifty, we oughta be adjusting before we get too far down the road.
But we, we would need the poles regardless.
Yes.
Of whether it was connected.
Right, as Phil said, we use them too, so it's not like it's something we're putting in just for other companies, it's.
True, I get that, but if you use that logic exclusively, then we don't need to charge them anything. I'm just saying if they're, we're charged a fair price based on the cost of a pole in twenty twenty, we should be charging somewhere close to the same amount in twenty twenty-five as a percentage of the pole cost. But we won't know that unless you give us some numbers. If you can come up with those numbers, I think that we could have that conversation in a future meeting and decide if we leave it alone, or if we make any adjustments.
Do it.
Thank you.
All right, I. Do we make a motion for approval?
Right.
For Thompson, for the amount of thirty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars?
I'll second.
Who did the first?
Jen.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can do it, I can do it.
Yeah, I'll do it first.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pause. Okay, motion carries.
Any other questions on the luck? All right, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Next up is the HTO Superintendent Jerry Austin.
Yes, Dave. Hello, Jerry.
Hi, Jerry.
A little jumping addition here. We installed two new services this month out of Jago. That rounds out our, uh, new service installations out there. All the, uh, all the services are installed. We did, uh, this past month. Following our flushing from the previous month, we had a, just a few small repairs, whether it be gaskets on the caps and the fire hydrants, um, broken valve box tops, things like that, that we found while we were out there. Uh, we went out and, uh, took care of all those small repairs. We did install a new fire hydrant at Second Street in Walnut. That's kinda tied into our Walnut Street water main replacement. The fire hydrant that was there was on the old water main, so it was gonna have to be removed regardless. We did install this fire hydrant on the other side of the intersection, which allowed us to run our temporary water main up Walnut Street, uh, when we got to that point. So we were able to provide service, uninterrupted service, um, to those residents without having a boil order. So like I said, it was, it was done as a, a step towards that Wal, Walnut Street water main replacement. Then, uh, we did work on our lead and copper survey this month, and we'll continue to do so until we have that inventory complete. Last year, whenever we kinda quit on that for the winter, we still had roughly, uh, three hundred to go. So we're gonna continue to work on that as time allows. And then, uh, we did have another old water service that was found by contractor at Seventh Clay Street that we didn't know about. So like with most of those, we talked to the, the homeowner there. They had purchased the property, the, during their property. They had no use for the water service, so we removed it from the water main to prevent further issues with, uh, that service line being dug up. We, uh, we did help the street department out on hydro excavating utilities on West Fourth Street to, um, keep their project moving along with the, the curving and the street paving up there. And then, uh, we did get our temporary water main service installed. We got our service lines installed. We've actually, the, uh, with all that, the new water main is installed. Bacteria tests have been passed. Uh, the guys actually today got, uh, we just started tying in the services to the new main that is in the ground today. We got four out of the seventeen done today. Those are very time-consuming when we put those in. We reconstruct the whole meter pit, so it is all new to the customer's side. So we have to tie back on to that customer's side, and there's, there's really never been a standard in the city. Most cities don't have a standard for that. It is left up to the customer to want material and what sizing they use on their meters. So one might be three-quarter inch copper, the next one's one inch copper, the next one's plastic. So we, uh, it's, it's a timely process to get all those fittings together and get them hooked up. We, uh, and then we did repair a felt service at nineteen oh seven West Windsor Court. Uh, we did find there it was copper. Whenever that was installed, we dug that up. We did not find any sand around that copper service line. And from what it looked like to us, they rock and rubbed a hole in that service. We found that service by, it was actually a neighbor, neighboring property called, uh, called in and said that they had had a wet spot in their yard for a couple of weeks. Uh, when we went to investigate, um, we immediately went to their house thinking it was their service line. Upon further investigation of pole meter lids and using our leak detection equipment that we have, we found that it was, it was actually two houses away from that property. So, uh, you know, we do ask anytime anybody finds anything like that around their yard where it's a common wet problem. Uh, sink holes around water meter pits are another good one. We did find one in, in Jago out here at Hunter's Crossing. They, uh, had had a sinkhole around the meter pit for quite some time. They, uh, they thought it was just a hole from the yard being put in. And, uh, six months later, they finally contacted us. We went out and it was a service line leaking. Uh, we were able to get that repaired. So, um, I know a lot of people thinks that it's a nuisance to call the city and report these kind of things, but uh, with our new metering system, we're not out there monthly, open meter lids. You know, we, we do make our rounds, but we have five distribution employees that takes care of thirty-six hundred customers, plus everything else that pertains to the water, um, the water system. Other than that, uh, moving on to the filter plant. We did, uh, have a flink tank float valve, uh, on our water soft, water softening system that feeds soft water to our Myox machines that generates our sodium hyperchlorite, which is what we use for disinfectant. We don't use a chlorine gas. We self-generate our own. It's a lot cheaper to generate. It's a lot safer. It's not a poisonous inhalation hazard like the gas is. So very vital to our, uh, our operation out there. And then, um, we were having some hiccups with our SCADA system, communicating with our water towers and some of our other things. Uh, we did come back to find that, uh, whenever we went out to troubleshoot these issues, they wasn't showing us the known issue. But working through it, we had a couple of battery backups in our system that were ten-plus years old. They were still showing that they were operating properly when you tested, tested the unit itself. But once it put under a load, we found that they were bad, so we've been kinda going through and updating those and looking and putting those on kind of a preventative maintenance schedule as far as, uh, replacing those. The, uh, company that we getting, get them from say that they're usually about a five-year lifespan on them, like most electronics anymore. Other than that, our metering system, we're, uh, still, we've got three more shipments of large diameter meters coming in. We have a total, uh, close to twenty large diameter meters still put in before our system's complete. So, uh, we did kinda pull off that to be all hands on deck with the water main installation on Walnut Street. I know, um, Rudolph is chomping at the bit to get up there. They, they've been on us every, every step of the way, trying to find out when we're gonna be done, so. We will get back on that, and those, like I said in the past, do take time. We have to make appointments with customers for water outages. A lot of places aren't legally allowed to have employees in buildings if the water's gonna be off for long periods of time, so. We, uh, we'll work weekends and evenings on those as need be to, to get those done. The only other thing that I have, just information. I have hired two high school kids for part-time summer help. With our, uh, not only for our preventive maintenance, for our fire hydrant program that we have, but our ISO audit is coming up this year as well. Our paint on our fire hydrants is very crucial to that ISO audit, as well as to our fire department. It's how they identify how many gallons per minute that fire hydrant puts out. That lets them know how many gallons a minute they can pull off that fire hydrant safely before they damage our system. So, uh, very crucial. It's something that we try to keep up on through the years with the city continuously growing and the numerous, uh, infrastructure improvements that are needed. We sometimes fall short of being able to keep up on those small things, so. We've got about three hundred and eighty-five fire hydrants in our town. In the past, for our preventive maintenance, was going out there, knocking off what least paint could, slapping a new coat of paint on them, and hoping it sticks for a while. We, uh, we have, um, kinda regrouped on that. They are taking these fire hydrants completely down to bare metal and bringing them back up with one coat of paint. Uh, there's some fire hydrants out there that we found that have about a half-inch coat of paint on them due to all the paint over the years, so. Well, yeah, we feel that this is best in order to get that paint to stick and last.
I'm sure.
So if you see them, John's been gracious enough to allow us to use the Ford Ranger that the meter eater used to use daily. They now only use it three times a month. We lack on vehicles for all employees to be able to provide them with another vehicle, so. We, uh, we'll be using the, the meter eater trucks, so they are outfitted in high biz class three with city logos, but if you guys see them out and about, that's what they are doing.
Is it expected they'll be able to finish three hundred and eighty-five in one summer?
We're hoping.
Back in the.
Our glass is half-full.
Back in the seventies during the flower power age, the, the city painted those, uh, those hydrants all in kinda pastel colors.
Fourth of July.
Yeah.
Flags and flowers and everything else. Kinda got away from the coating, color coating.
I've seen that was popular.
See the pictures you submitted in here. I, I wish I could present these to the city of Honeyberg and residents. They could see what these.
So, so those, they, uh, those pictures, I just shared those for you guys, kinda to get a, a visual of that water main on Walnut Street. That is why that main was replaced. We dug, we, uh, as we dug that main out, we, we've been trying to replace our water mains where the old water main laid. There is so much infrastructure in the ground, you don't need to kill a pipe and bury another one right next to it. It's, it gets pretty congested. So we've kinda decided that we're gonna go back within the same vicinity of what was there. Kinda helps us with tying water mains in. That way our water main's straight down a block, and it doesn't have constant forty-fives in it. It helps people in the future to locate those water mains. In that water main, we did dig up two repair clamps. One of those repair clamps was what we call CC. It has a tap in it, and it was actually put in place for a service. Uh, what it looked like, that service was copper. It was the only copper service on that block. The rest of them were lead. So we can only assume that that was excavated around at one point. It was found it was lead. The city's always been very good at removing the lead right away. So, um, anytime there's a lead service line, that corporation stop was produced when lead was allowed. So we replaced the corporation stop as well. So we installed those CCs in order to do that. So that, that main was, um, a, what was it, eighteen twenty-four, I believe is what the date was stamped on that cast iron. That, those, those few pictures there that I shared is the reason why we replaced that water main due to the congestion. That, that goes back to, the city is, uh, I know Glenn, you've been on this board for quite some time. The city used to not have a water, uh, hydrant flushing policy. We used to not flush hydrants at all. I would say the last, I would say the last, probably ten years, the city's had a good policy in place. We flush twice a year to help prevent this issue here. That six-inch water main probably throughout, I just shared three pictures there, three different pieces, probably had roughly a three-inch inside diameter flowing water through that. So in any time that we find that, we're able to, uh, to replace those mains to help our system. That fire hydrant off that water main previously was an orange top. That's anything that flows under a thousand gallons a minute. So with, uh, with actually just removing that water main to the other side of the intersection, we floated after we installed it, and it was already up to eleven hundred gallon a minute. So within twenty feet of setting a new fire hydrant, that water main was already flowing more water. Now, you know, if we, if we would've set it back in the same place on this new water main, it would've, it would've flowed those higher numbers as well. So just, uh, sometimes it makes you wonder why we replace some water main that's not blowing out of the ground all the time, and this is why. We follow our numbers with our yearly hy, hydrant flushing, where we take our reads, and that helps us pinpoint our choked up areas in order to do this. Very vital to our system. I actually, to be honest, I, I didn't print those pictures trying to save ink and paper, and I forgot I sent them to you.
That's okay.
So I appreciate you, uh, you reminded me of that.
Very, very informative, that's why.
You might not want the public to know.
Well, they, the, the pictures are pretty, uh, they're, they're, a lot of people will think they're, they're gruesome. Really, that's mineral deposits. Every water main in every town, everywhere, it looks like that. The new C nine hundred plastic water main that we do install, and actually the old, uh, transact water main, which is asbestos concrete, that will be the next thing that will be happening to.
Right.
Remove. Those, uh, those pipes are, uh, very slick on the inside. They're not porous. Surprisingly, even the concrete, due to the water that flows through that pipe, it's, uh, it's a very slick lining. So you don't have the, the tuberculosis, the built-up, uh, material of minerals on that pipe that hold to the, the porous cast and ductile iron. So it's, uh, it does, you can Google the inside of a water main, and it'll show you those same pictures.
Yeah.
But, yeah, that's, uh, like I said, I just try to show you guys the reason why we do replace some mains that are not, you're not physically seeing issues with.
Very informative.
Jerry, how bad does a leak have to, have to be before our internal systems, like the meters that I remember replacing, that was supposed to be one of the benefits of having those meters, that it would kinda flash a warning to, to people that there's a lot more water being used at this meter than before? Are we, are we still?
Yeah, yep, we're still doing that, uh, and that, uh, they're, they're an electronic meter. We, we hope to think they work great. We've came up to some things where, um, our billing office will catch one that has high water usage that month, and we'll go back through, and there won't be an alarm at all. But normally what they say is any abnormal water usage, it is a smart meter. It's supposed to learn the way you use water. So if you use water at set points of the time during the day, and then all of a sudden it's using water at different points of the day, it will throw out an alarm for, uh, high water usage. Anytime there is a constant water flow of more than four hours at a time, it'll throw out a high water usage. Uh, we did have a, a woman that lives close to the water treatment plant on the highway. We had an alarm for her. We went out and talked to her, and she just had some family that came into town. They'd been there for three days. From Florida, actually. Her husband worked for a water system in Florida. Uh, we stood there and talked quite a bit about the, the water metering system, and, uh, it's kinda nice to hear a different perspective on, you know, they're treating saltwater down there. But, um, they, uh, we still do that daily. Blake Lindauer at Meter Tech, he sits down every morning. Some days, some days he's there for ten minutes, running through the system, writing outdoor tags. There's, some days he's there for forty-five minutes, and, uh, and then we're hanging door tags. It's something that the city offers as convenience. It's, uh, something that we decided that we would do to, to help the community. That way they're not catching that high bill. At the end of the month, we can try to help them throughout the month to, to stop that high bill. But like I said, it is, it is a computer program. They do miss sometimes. Sometimes they're not caught till the end of the month, and we can look back through the system to see if there are alarms and flags. Sometimes there's not any at all, and then we, we have to discuss on how well these electric meters are really reading our water system. So that's, we, uh, with that, we do go out every, um, every year, we'll pull certain water meters throughout our system. We will, um, we'll take a certified meter, we'll flow water through both and make sure they are, um, still flowing water correctly, that they're, they are calibrated accurately. A lot of our larger diameter water meters, uh, we aren't able to do in-house just due to the, the equipment that's needed to do it, the cost of it. So, you know, our big users, like Farbest, we do have a company come in every year and an outside company to calibrate those as well and make sure they're still accurate and, and flowing. A lot of the large water users also, Debbie with the billing office, she'll print me out water usage every month. And I've got a file for each one of our businesses that are our, our large water usages. And not only are they tracking it, but I track it as well, and if we ever see a, a decrease in water usage, you know, there's, um, a facility here that washes trucks. They, uh, we've seen a big decrease in their water usage. Well, they're having the same problem that most, uh, companies are. They can't find the employees to wash semis anymore. So they've really kept back on washing semis. Even, even with the high water usage, we check our low water usage as well with that. We go out, we physically talk to the customers and, and, uh, then we monitor it. Debbie put. Debbie puts, and the other girls, they put alerts on the systems to monitor for low water usage, just like we do high water usage, to make sure we are billing accurately.
Any updates on your plant, your filter plant?
We are, we're getting close to getting that put out to bid. You guys approved all that, so just working through all the final details to get that going. Still, as far as timelines, on track. We're hopeful to keep that timeline so we can start that process at our low demand at the water filtration plant. And then it's back up and running during our high demand.
Thank you, Jerry.
All right, thank you guys.
City Attorney Phil Snyder.
I have nothing.
Court attorney or Tom did that?
Yeah, we've got budget for 2026 coming up. I put a calendar together here. Up through, we'll need to decide on the, probably the meetings in August. But that doesn't, we don't need that right away. But I do have to input some other information as far as the budget hearing and the adoption meeting. Right now, the budget hearing would be October the 14th. And then the adoption meeting would be October 28th. Just want to make sure these are okay.
When we get everybody here, we need to schedule our budget meeting in August.
But if those are, if those two dates are okay, if you could give me an approval on those two, that'd be great.
October 14th and 28th.
28th and 14th, yep.
As far as I'm concerned, yes, we give an approval.
All seconded. All in favor? Opposed? No opposed.
Okay.
Let's check our council.
With federal funds, we've been doing these things, but the federal government would like an allowable cost policy that the city has. Basically, these things would be, that the cost would be necessary and reasonable, allocable, compliant with the grant, the federal grant if we had, that we use them, that we account for them consistently. We have the proper documentation and we're not charging, double dipping, charging twice, two grants with the same amount of money. So this policy, I would just need your approval to put in the file. And I mean, these are the things that we're already doing. We just need a policy that you have approved to show them that you agree.
So I'll make a motion to approve Tom's request for a low cost policy for the city of Honeyburg.
I'll make the motion.
Bounce.
But is that a-
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Oh, you did? I'll second it.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed?
It's approved.
Okay, and then you've got a copy of the redevelopments. Actually, seven resolutions that I have to give you. They have determined that there is no excess assessed value in any of the TIF districts. We have seven of them that could be allocated to another, other taxing units for the budget year of 2020, 2026. You don't need to do anything. I just need to present them to you and they're finding that, there is no assessed value and that the potential captured assessment, the increase will be captured and the overtaxing taxing units will be notified by sending certified mail of the same, the same thing that you got here.
What is excess assessed valuation?
Well, each TIF, each TIF has a base and then the real estate increases in value based on whatever the owner does and that part is captured. And that part is what stays within the TIF to be used either within or servicing the TIFs. And then the base part is, still continues to come to the city. The captured part doesn't come to the city until it's completely-
Stays in the TIF.
So these resolutions are saying that all that captured increment is necessary to service outstanding bonds or for scheduled improvements that are in or benefit various TIF districts. And there's no available allocable TIF revenues to turn back to the other taxing units.
I get it.
That's all I just need to give that to you. But if you would, if you would sign the policy from here under your name. And we also just started yesterday, State Board of Accounts audit for 23 and 24.
It's a fun time of the year.
Is that all you have, Tom?
That's all I have, yeah.
And other items, I want to make comment about, we had our first of the four Fridays on Market Street Park this last past Friday. It was a great turnout, I believe. It's a very nice day for it. I'm looking forward for the next ones. The next one will be on June 27th. Let's hope for good weather and a good turnout for that also. So if you've got nothing new, nice stop on by. So anything you need or adding from the council?
I have a question, Tom. Jerry mentioned about the leaks in door tags. Do we have capabilities in our computer to send out emails to IP? I know you have to have the email address, but let's say you get a notice.
Because not everybody- You know, I don't know. You mean automatically send out emails?
Because not everybody's going to check their door. They may put it-
You get that sometimes.
They may put it on the front door and not never go to the front door, so.
I'll check with you.
It's possible that we either get a phone call and/or-
It would have to go through BSNA. There's nothing there with, nothing there with census themselves.
Yeah, I know.
I think we, I don't know. But let me check that information, though. It's going to be hard, too.
Yeah, I understand. Have to volunteer their phone number and/or email address. That's all I have.
Update, can you, Tom, I know you're using the financials part of this about the First Street improvement. Can you update us since the mayor's on here and give us an update on what that stands?
I don't. I mean, I could if I knew. I don't know.
So we do not know what's there.
Last I heard, he said that they're still engineering it. I don't know how long that's going to take, but I hope not long. We need, I've had several residents ask me about it and it needs to be approved.
Yeah, I was hoping, hoping to get some more information.
I saw a crew walking First Street this afternoon at noon, looking like they were evaluating. It looked like engineers and whoever, I don't know, contractors. So maybe they were gathering information as to cost. What was bid was just to replace the trench. There's been so much damage done, particularly in the concrete, that the mayor would like to use the excess grant funds that are left over to replace the entire concrete surface.
I agree.
I understand.
Are they planning to replace it with concrete?
Yes.
As to a portion of it, for sure. The portion that's concrete now because of the subbase.
Anything from the citizens' items? Please state your name.
Pam Bulte.
No, you're not.
Janet Schnell. Yes, Jerry, you guys did a fantastic job on our street replacing the gas. The repair of our land, they did an excellent job. If you guys ever want to look and just see what good quality is, they did a great job and meeting with people and saying, this is what we're doing. So definitely appreciate that from the city. I had a question about the hoarding ordinance. If I can get a copy of the letter that was sent out and primarily because the progress that we have seen has been, there are no leaves in the yard. I don't think that was part of the hoarding ordinance. There is a narrow passageway to the front door that cannot be opened. There's rocks that are being put down, but the piles have not been addressed. And what we've been seeing is that some things are leaving one place and another truckload is coming back to replace what was taken away. So it would be easier for us to be able to monitor, to see what's going on and just to see, you know, even what's the deadline.
That'd be a Paul thing, right?
Would that be, if they spent a letter to Tom again? Would he need a letter for you just for information?
Fill that information, or is that public, private? I would, if there's a document, they can request it from-
Yeah, if there's an existing document, it can be requested.
So you're saying if it's a public letter that we all can see, I just send you an email and just say, can I see the letter? Okay.
And you can either come in and look at it or you can, I can make you a copy and charge you 10 cents.
That's pretty cheap. Maybe I'll look back at that on my policy, too. That'll work. So that was my question.
Good deal. Any other things you want to say?
Yeah, really, I mean, the gas department really did a really good job. I was quite impressed with what they had talked about with boring and replacing even where the grass had died, where they had a tear and all that. They did a really good job.
They did, it worked.
So it was nice.
Good, good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Motion to adjourn if there's something else.
Motion by Kizlin?
I'll second it.
Second by Bounce? All in favor? Aye.
Opposed? Just couldn't let you.
I need to read it to second it.
To adjourn.